Good evening. Welcome to the January 25th meeting of the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals. We will begin first with Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 26th meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is passed. We have new business. We'd like to appoint, reappoint our Vice Chair, Mr. Bowen, for the coming 2023 year. In my absence, he has performed admirably and we would like to have the resolution. I would like to now offer this resolution, albeit resolved that Gerald Bowman be designated to the Vice Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the year 2023 authorized to conduct meetings of the Zoning Board of Appeals and to sign resolutions and related documents, including invoices and correspondence on behalf of the Zoning Board of Appeals in the absence of the chairperson. We need a, Madam Secretary, would you take a vote, please?
Second.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Who's second?
Seconded by Mr. Perkins.
Okay. Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Well, the heavy burden. You can pass it. That's good. Thank you very much. We have now a motion to, it's a public hearing for JASALLC for February 22nd, 2023. This is to correct a procedural defect on the amendment to increase the square footage that already was granted in a resolution and was never advertised in public hearing. So, is this the motion? No, that's not.
That's the whole thing.
Yes, I would move. Is there a second? Mr. Perkins has seconded. Madam Secretary, would you poll the board, please?
Chairman McNary?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Thank you.
So moved. Thank you. Now we move on to a rehearing of Camp Victory Lake. Let me hold on a minute.
Chair, if I may?
Yes, ma'am. Counsel?
Given that this is something that is rarely seen by a ZBA, I just want to address what it is. Under Town Law Section 267A12, a ZBA is authorized to conduct a rehearing to review any prior determination of the board, not previously reheard. It does require unanimous vote of the board. If the rehearing is authorized, then the board would proceed and make a motion to open the rehearing and then it is reviewed anew. The applicant would be allowed to present and then if there are any comments from the public, those would be allowed to be heard as well and the board members would be allowed to ask questions. So we would just essentially be starting it again. I will also acknowledge that this decision was made and filed in December. In order to retain their legal rights and protect themselves, the applicant did file an Article 78 action. We discussed it as attorneys. I would have done the same thing. It's necessary to preserve their rights. So that doesn't influence the board's decision here. One is not dependent on the other, but I did want to acknowledge that from their position, that's a necessary requirement, not, you know, an attempt to persuade or do anything otherwise as dealing with the two variances that are of issue here. Okay, are there any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Chair.
I would then request a motion to review the Camp Victory Lake application at a rehearing pursuant to Town Law Section 267-A12. Is there a second? Second. Madam Secretary, would you poll?
Oh, yes. Excuse me. Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
And Chairman McNary?
Yes.
So that's unanimous.
Therefore, we will then, we have agreed to review this. I will then entertain a motion to open a public hearing for the rehearing for Camp Victory Lake. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Great.
Now, we recognize too that the discussion tonight, and we would anticipate probably the need to continue the public hearing into February, just to make sure that all the questions, you've had an opportunity to answer all of our questions and we've had an opportunity to ask all our questions.
Understood.
Okay. So as we understand, before us in the original were two variances. One was for the 100-foot variance for the creek and the second was a variance for the heights of the building. And how would you like to proceed?
Well, as per usual, I've prepared a little spiel, so I figured we'll start off with that and then we'll move on from there.
Okay, good. And we are happy to have you back again and we appreciate your participation.
No, absolutely. Thank you again for allowing us to do this rehearing. Again, it was a little, I would say, unexpected, our last meeting, so I'm glad we got the chance to, the opportunity to retalk about this. So just to give everyone a little introduction, again, as always, Peter Sander from Ready Engineering. Tonight with me, I have my fellow engineer, Thomas Harvey. We have some representatives from the Northeastern Conference, including Deanna Lambert, who is our primary camp contact. We also have a camp representative, Stafford Byers, who's a fellow member. And then tonight with us, we also have Allison Phillips, who is a partner at Young Summer LLC, which is a land use firm. So just to give everyone an overall update of the project and how this kind of came to be, so what we're proposing is a master development plan for the Camp Victory Lake parcel owned by the Northeastern Conference. This started in 2017 with the development of a master plan by FLA. Over the years, which is now nearing six, we've been working to refine it, working with the planning board to get everything up to spec and adhering to code. One of the pieces involved in this project is the Phase 1 site plan, which we are here tonight to discuss. That includes the religious use, or the religious pavilion-sanctuary, which is right here in the bottom right-hand corner of the master plan. Included with that Phase 1 development is the construction of several parking areas, an emergency access lane for fire access. One of the items tonight is the expansion of, or the widening of an existing stream crossing so that we can have some gravel bus parking in the northern portion of the site. To give you just the board an idea of why the building is situated where it was, so in 2017, FLA had designed a master plan which called for the construction of the pavilion in this northern area of the site. After raising some initial concerns about Blanding's Turtle Habitat and its potential to be in that area, we had about a year hiatus where we were hired Jason Tesoro to go through and analyze the site. He did find potential for Blanding's Turtle Habitat, so rather than trying to play around in the northern portion of the site, we moved it to the southeastern corner, which is where it is currently. Due to its history of disturbance, there used to be old cabins there, an old parking area, things like that. So we figured that that would be a less obtrusive and less impactful area to locate that building. So after several years before the planning board and your board, we worked it out and then at a point where we were developing, building elevations and designing the structure, we realized that several variances were required. One for the stream corridor crossing, or the stream corridor encroachment. That's for several grading and infrastructure improvements, including the stream crossing widening, which has that variance reduced to zero. And then we also realized that we were going to need a building height variance from 35 feet, which is the green belt zoning building height, to 47.5 feet, which is an increase of 12.5 feet or about 35%. I have that number, 35.7%. So again, this whole project has been through a substantial environmental review by the planning board where we addressed parking, traffic, environmental studies, capacities, large event management, all of which had been discussed and worked through with the planning board. And then leading us to here where we are waiting on the final variance for the height before we could proceed. So just to kind of reiterate, again, we were a little shocked at our last zoning board meeting where we had assumed that all of the zoning board's comments and concerns had been addressed per some letters that they had sent the planning board, which we adjusted our plans accordingly to. And so we really wanted to get in front of the board again to discuss this and really gauge those concerns. So continuing on with my spiel, just to give the board a brief timeline, again, I mentioned that we were working on this in 2017 with an initial area variance submitted in 2021. So since then, the building had actually been, which I'm not sure it was ever presented in front of the zoning board, but the building had been reduced in size from our initial concept sketch.
Tom, do you mind propping up the building on these? Can you turn the page? Yeah, there's a page behind it.
Sorry, those clamps are difficult to manage.
What you were going to show us was the original?
Yes. So I'm not sure the board was aware of our efforts to kind of reduce the height of the structure. So initial concept sketches that we had in early 2001 had this structure significantly taller with a 75-foot building height up here. Since then, we wanted to reduce that to be less substantial, which required, or had us axa cupla, axa cross on top, reduce the height of this upper mezzanine area and really sinking it into the ground. So from that, we got that, this, which is the much more scaled-down version. So that happened throughout early 2021 to mid-2021. So on November 10th, after having reviewed this, the, for your own record, the ZBA had consented for the planning board to serve as lead agency so that they could explore and have us address environmental concerns, traffic, parking, et cetera, all the things that really go into SEAKER. In December 16th, the ZBA had submitted a letter to the planning board with potential concerns, just to hand these out. So I'm going to be referring to some of these throughout the process. Just some supporting docs that we've seen over the years, but I wanted to re-present them.
Thank you.
So all of the, all of the environmental issues relative to the 100-foot, you feel was, were all addressed in the planning board's work?
Correct.
And I know we had discussions about those.
Yes, and I'll dip into some of the modifications we've made per your guys' recommendations.
Go ahead.
But if you look on the first page that we had, I have in this little packet that I prepared, you'll note a letter from the ZBA to the planning board noting their concerns with the project, which include fire department access along the east side of the proposed structure and then relocation of bunk cabins. I believe that it was actually Vice Chair Bowen that had mentioned the cabins, which were previously proposed along the hill overlooking Camp Victory Lake.
If I stand corrected, you also proposed that you wanted to move those actually closer to the creek.
Correct. So, and that was for a view purposes, but after considering the board and, we really didn't want to ruffle any feathers, so instead of locating those cabins up here along the northern area of this parking lot, we had relocated those cabins outside of the stream corridor encroachment into this flatter area where you can kind of create a little community. So that was actions that we had done in response to your comments and concerns. Then following that, so that was December 16th, 2021. On January 18th, 2022, the planning board had sent out a letter to the ZBA recommending approval for the variances. And that's where we began having a bit of a delay because prior to the ZBA's ability to grant or deny variances, we had to conclude SEAKER, which the planning board would not be willing to do until we received preliminary approval from the DPW about our site entrances, which again, we had a series of traffic studies going back and forth, analyzed it. So we finally made those changes and got it presented to the board, which then, based off their review of what we had to do, they issued a neg deck, or negative declaration for SEAKER for its impact on December 7th, 2022, which then led us to the December 15th meeting, which also 22, about a month ago. So that's the kind of the recap on our timeline and history here. The next thing I wanted to go into was our justification for the requested variances. As we, as part of our applications, we prepared a SEAKER narrative, or, sorry, variance narrative outlining exactly why we are requesting these variances, what we are doing to mitigate it and why it's a potential impact. This is based off of New York Town Law Standard Test for Area Variances, which prescribed five separate questions that we have to answer in order, as part of our variance request, which I'll talk you off a little longer. I'll kind of go through these and just highlight the bulleted points that was provided in our analysis. So question one would have been, will the variance produce an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties? As we requested two variances, we provided two justifications for each of the variances, which I will go through and provide a brief responses for each of those. So in response to that question for building height, we noticed that this would not be a detriment to nearby properties since everything that is proposed as part of our master plan is really kind of a refinement of existing facilities. We're not proposing to increase capacity of the site. We're just proposing to provide updated facilities since the camp and the majority of buildings were constructed prior to the 1950s, so a lot has changed. Also to note is the adjacent low-density uses. There's also an adjacent religious camp facility, which also holds events to the west, and there is an automobile recycling plant. Kind of our, another fact, point is the reduction of noise. Currently, all of these events that are currently still going on at the camp are held outdoors. Part of the reason we're proposing such a large structure is that we can move those events indoors to reduce the impact of noise to the various neighbors. We've also provide screening in the form of grading to sink that building into the ground so that it is less noticeable to the neighbors and surrounding properties, as well as a substantial vegetative buffer. If you go through, I actually included the landscaping plan, which includes no mo areas within the stream corridor, deciduous and evergreen screening along North Quaker and So that's kind of addressing our building height. For the stream crossing, the reason why it would not be a detriment to nearby properties is a long history of disturbance on site. As I had mentioned, the building was located in that southeast corner because of prior disturbance and infrastructure and buildings that have since been demoed. So it's been pretty disturbed since then.
Were there, do you know what the buildings were prior to those being taken down?
There was a series of cabins over in that area. There was a lot of underground infrastructure that had kind of been left, so that had all have to be taken up to replace with new up-to-date infrastructure. Also, one of the big things, the reason why our variance went, got reduced to zero was the stream crossing, because we had to do improvements up to the stream crossing. That's again, existing. That was constructed as part of getting the wastewater facilities over in the northern portion of the site that the camp is connected to.
When was that done?
I believe that was done in 2005.
Okay.
For my, for my, no, sorry. I have it in my notes.
That's all right.
Yeah. So that kind of answers the question number one on the variance request. The next question that goes into the standard variance test is, can the benefit be sought by the applicant, or can the benefit sought by the applicant be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance? Our position on this was that the building height, having already been reduced, couldn't be reduced anymore without either limiting the capacity of the structure, which would then require us to construct either a much larger footprint building to accommodate those people or multiple structures. In any of those cases, the environmental impacts from disturbance, impervious surface coverage and all the other things that are assessed through SEAKER would have been at least 50% greater than what is currently proposed.
Steph, if you went to a, it would be a lower building, which you would have to expand, would that building, and I would assume that you would still locate that in that corner?
Correct.
So you would have to expand the size of that to the west and perhaps to the north?
Correct, which might lead to either even greater encroachments to that corridor and, which again, is not something we're trying to do. We're trying to limit as much as we can.
But the height would meet the code?
It depends on how we would review it. My, our biggest concern also is that the height also allows for acoustical improvements. So the idea is that the camp is going to broadcast these sermons and events and using the newest equipment. Anything reduction kind of messes with the acoustics of the structure, creating a lesser.
So are there broadcasts from there now?
The structure does not exist currently, so we do not have the facilities to broadcast.
You couldn't go wider because of the parking?
Yes, no, and the parking, because if we, again, shifting everything requires everything to move greater disturbance.
You'd need to shift a lot of the parking to the west.
Correct.
And we don't have that space.
Yeah.
Have you thought about, can you go into the ground more? I mean, could you literally put the building further into the ground?
Unfortunately, because of how close we are to Victory Lake, we're coming close to the water table where we'll then experience some hydrology issues. Another thing, even sinking it into the ground doesn't really fix the height variance because of the fact of how the building height is calculated, which is the average height of all four sides of the structure.
But you're four, but two of those sides would be?
Deeper.
Would be less.
Would be deeper, but if the middle point would still be the same, or actually it would be, it would be greater, our variance, because if the midpoint is brought lower because we sink, so say it's at 314.
You bring the dirt up, the distance that you measure.
Yeah, it's from the dirt.
You went, were you done with the whole floor?
Yeah. So say at 314 elevation is the, is right here, right?
Right, yeah.
And then was, we'll say for ease, for just the ease of explaining, 300 feet on that.
Right.
That creates our mid, or medium building height at 307.
Right.
If we sink that structure further into the ground, that actually reduces our median building height, which would require a greater height variance.
I don't think so. Ted?
I just want to mention the engineering issues associated with that. If we lowered the building and the entrances, it would most likely flood because we wouldn't be able to get positive drainage out of it.
Right.
I think that would be the bigger risk.
That's probably our biggest issue, concern with that.
Okay.
I thought that there was, is that working? I thought that there was also a concern about access around the building so that sinking it below grade may preclude access because it's a large structure, you need to have certain access points.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure that putting something below grade.
If you lower the building, the access point wouldn't change. You're lowering the building.
But you don't have, the floor is here and...
Oh, at the reverse side?
Yeah.
So you can't walk out.
You'd have to do a berm.
And I think that there was also accommodations for the fire truck accessibility that was required.
Well, the fire truck's not going around the back, it's only going to be on the one side.
Right, on the north side.
It's going on the one side.
There's no problem with lowering it there, you know, stairwells and, you know.
But from what I hear you say, the primary concern would be the water table?
Water table, correct.
Yeah.
Another, let me ask this, the base of the building right now, as you've designed it, how far above the water table is that now?
Six, four to six feet maybe?
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So with our torrential rains coming?
It would be really hard to get the water out and into the wetland.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, interrupt whenever you want. Now switch, that kind of answers too. For the height, stream corridor, so stream corridor, again, we had placed that in the northern section. We moved this to the southeastern section to reduce any, so that was act, if we had located that building in the northern part of the site, we would have less, we'd still need the variance for the widening of the road, but all the other facilities would be without, or outside of that stream corridor. Because of how we located it where it is, it's in the more clustered southern campus, that kind of makes that a little difficult because of our proximity to the river.
The building itself is outside the 100-foot.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, it's just infrastructure-related improvements.
Right.
Considering parking, we have some stormwater management practices and things like that. So then, next question as part of the test is, is the requested variance substantial? As kind of discussed before, this is, our height is actually reducing some of the impact. So the 35 feet going to 47.5 feet is a 35.7% increase. As I kind of off-the-cuff mentioned before, if we reduce the height, we have to make everything bigger, resulting in at minimum, at least a 50% expansion in building footprint, coverage, things like that. Also, this is not, building heights are typically used for view sheds, to kind of protect the view sheds. The site is surrounded by roadways and then beyond the roadways are low-density residential. So most of those properties of which have, are situated elevations above this property, including having substantial vegetative buffers.
You've got now on, yeah, I'm thinking, my mind just went blank. On the north-south road?
Yes.
Quaker.
Quaker, North Quaker.
You have a house, you have one or two houses that would be, they're on a corner there and they are elevated above Quaker?
Yes.
Significant.
Yeah, they're at a higher elevation than where we are.
Okay, and on the south of that, we have the auto recycling.
That's a little further, it's more this direction.
Okay.
But there is, as you can see, we have the intersection and there is a substantial vegetative buffer between there and residential uses.
Okay.
Another, and then to the north, we have the... Another, and then to the north, we have the Eleanor Nursing Home. So actually, upon further review, that structure is actually taller than what is currently proposed. If you look on the fifth item in that little package I gave you, I did a rough exhibit to show and demonstrate.
Just the picture?
Yes, it's a picture.
With the red lines?
Yes.
Oh, looks great.
So that's, that's our attempt to kind of document that this structure, which is really the only one that would have regular visibility of our sanctuary, is in fact taller than what we are currently proposing.
Remind me, the top of your building is at 300 and?
300.
It, that doesn't matter.
Let me see, I want to know.
No, it would be at, I believe it was 354 feet.
54?
354.
So it's the same, it's the same as the height of the building of the Eleanor, Elmer Residential. You've got your top red line for that, which is the top of the building, is 360, I'm reading it right?
354.
354, I'm sorry.
Correct.
And the top of your building is?
354. But the difference is that the way we have our entrances situated with a smaller, or having the variable entrance height.
Right.
Theirs does not have that. So in reality, their building gets much bigger than ours because of that and how you review that.
Okay.
So, just for everyone's point of view.
What's the square feet of your building?
47,000.
And what's square feet at Eleanor?
I believe 15 or 16. But it has equivalent square footage because of the, how it stacks and all the floors, a total square footage.
You had shown us some, some pictures that you had developed in terms of the height of the building if we were standing on the corner of Quaker and Chrome Elbow.
Correct, and I, they are
Are they in this?
Yes, they are. They are the second-to-last set.
Okay. There's a question I would, am I missing those?
Just for everyone's reference, it's this one. We also included, right, the building elevations for the building itself that are unobstructed.
Oh, me too.
If
Are these actual trees that are there?
Yes, so I went out on site and I took images from the road, and then I presented those to, there's a whole methodology on the back of how our architects generated these images. And just to note that this buffer, we are not proposing to disturb, so we're only proposing to enhance. So if you look at the landscaping plan, we show additional plantings along this side, which are not reflected in these renderings.
Talk about the landscaping program.
Yes. So if everyone looks at the site plan set, which is the third, the last one, right before this, you know
I love all these documents.
So you'll note that we're providing a substantial landscaping buffer. At first, this was going to be evergreen screening, but then we added mixed up with deciduous and evergreens. We're also offering
Peter, is that page 12 of 19, just so we can all follow?
Yes, 12 of 19. You know what, I will pop it up here too. It's the last one. Yep.
Here we are.
Yep. So yeah, so you'll see this landscaping buffer. This has been developed over numerous back and forth with the planning board to develop something that's going to look nice.
Mm-hmm.
At first, we were going to do a simple landscape screening where, you know, you have the soldier trees that go doop, 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 doop in a zigzag pattern. We wanted to create a more natural look so that it obscures the building even more, creating a mixture of the deciduous and evergreen trees. We also are going to be implementing a no-mown zone, and that is in direct response to the stream corridor encroachment. That whole limitation has been set so that it doesn't fragment existing habitat for species.
Mm-hmm.
That area right now is mowed grass right up to the lake. What we're doing is we're going to be letting that kind of take back naturally, and then we're also going to be proposing some of these special planting areas, which are designed to enhance the availability of food for native species on the site. They consist of many berry plants and edible foods. And in addition, just the vegetated screening we're providing, we're also going to be doing numerous other plantings such as red maples in the parking lot for shade trees and things like that.
You're, talk, I see, I'm most interested along Quaker and the little part of the Chrome Elbow on the corner there. I see the white pine, you have quite a few white, well, a number of white pine. What's the other one? Are there, are you spruce?
Yep, we have spruce, white pine, we have arboroides, and I believe some gray birch.
Yes.
So again, knowing that that area is going to exhibit some disturbance as we cut into it for the building to sink it down and get the emergency fire lanes in, we wanted to heavily plant that so that come time when it's planted, this is going to grow into a nice vegetative buffer, equivalent or better than the one currently there that may get disturbed as part of that.
On average, the buffer that you have outlined here, how, how deep is that? I mean, how?
Tall.
From Quaker into the building, what are we talking about roughly?
How wide?
As wide, yeah, wide, I guess is the
And also, Peter, the height of these vegetation.
Well, all of those are listed in the plant schedule up in the upper right-hand corner. So each type of tree says it's five feet, six feet, up to 10 feet.
Thank you, sir.
So that's useful.
The existing buffer is probably about 25 feet wide and then another 15 or 20 with the proposed additional trees.
Okay, so this width here is about 20 feet?
Yep, that's these like squiggly lines that represent the existing tree line there along the road. You see how it's just about that split the road back to C here?
All right, so all along here and all along there, about 20 feet?
Yep, existing stuff that stays and then proposed stuff behind it.
Okay.
Yep.
So the height of that, how high will that, will the new vegetation be? Are we going to block the building or?
I don't know if it's, it's going to be blocked, but what it will be is obscured.
And the existing trees are mature that are staying. So there are a bunch of white pines. I think that's probably why those species were chosen, because they fit in with what's already there.
Yeah, and they're naturally indigenous to this area. So we wanted to keep something that's natural.
Peter?
So that is our justifications for, that would be, roping it back to the variance test for three. Going on the variance test for four, will the proposed variance have an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? As I've said, I don't want to be a broken record, but the area we chose was formally disturbed, it's regularly disturbed, we're proposing that to limit that. The, again, to bring it back, the neighborhood also consists of the nursing home, which I don't believe any neighbors have came out to complain about the height of that structure, which is going to be taller or equivalent. And then, less sprawl, because we're kind of keeping it condensed because of these limitations, less sprawl and having the height means less impact because we don't need a larger footprint. And then, screening also enhances the habitat. That's kind of what we were just discussing with the no-mown zone and the implementation of these kind of edible gardens.
Speaking of the noise, how late will events go? Are there any rules on everybody has to leave by whatever time?
Right, so the, now the way the events are, they're pretty much done before nine, 10 o'clock, and not that many people stay on grounds to do those noises. So you're figuring the church services are ending at about sunset the two weeks when they have them there with that mass people, those a few who live along that corridor that you see. But noise, usually, we don't get noise complaints, we usually let the neighbors know, as you heard from some of them before, when we're having large events there, the time they start, the time they end, and most of them have been coming on the camp to enjoy some of the events now.
I'm thinking more about what I said last time, a lot of buses pulling out, going left, right.
Right, because they're
And what, how late can that happen? Buses are noisy.
The buses usually, because they're coming from maybe Boston and New York area when they rent those buses, at about 5, 6 o'clock, they're trying to get out of there to get home. So they're not staying there late because they're chartering a bus to get there. So they're getting up there for about 8:30, 9:00, and by about 5 o'clock, you usually see them pulling out.
And again, just to reiterate, these are all activities that are currently happening on-site. So this noise for the buses is currently being generated without the mitigation provided by it being enclosed.
But one of the things, as you point, I'm happy that you pointed out about the buses and leaving, with this new plan and the traffic study, it will help in the way the buses come in and the way the buses leave. And now the site of the camp that they're coming from is also top of Quaker versus trying to get through that small gate down at the
Right.
Right.
And then a lot of the interior roadways are going to be widened and kind of refined. We have a circulation plan that we developed with the planning board to kind of address that. So that leads to faster movement of these buses, less idling, less regular noise that's generated by them.
The schedule, if you were to characterize the schedule of programming, I mean, is there, is there a focus on several months, or is it a regular every month, or?
But right now, the highlight is in the summer months. So during the summer camp time, we have maybe about 200 kids there, so you're not having a large population there. It's the first week, the last week of June, the first week of July, that has the largest group. And then, talking about maybe a thousand something, will be that Memorial Weekend, and then, and that's just for the day with the crowd, and then one more time in September.
Is there a mega event in the year?
The mega event is the last week of June and the first week of July.
Okay.
And so the neighbors kind of know the schedule of that's when that's happening.
They take their vacation.
They take their, well, and we're hoping that more than won't take their vacation and they'll join us for the fairs and stuff, because now they're not going to be seeing everybody tenting all over the place, or, because everybody will be in one building, they won't have to hear all the sounds, because the acoustic will be much better, because the ceiling height will be much better, will be higher, and you won't have to hear all that bouncing back.
What about what your program is today? Now that you have this beautiful building, what will the increase in frequency be?
Right, so, okay, so we talked about that last time, because the, I've been going there for several years. What happens is the same amount of people attend, so we're not expecting an increase in the number of people that will be attending, more so what we're expecting is just a way to house them as they attend over the years. We've tracked it over the years in terms of youth, young adult, children, adult, and their attendance, and it has been off by maybe 100 or 200, and especially now with COVID, and we want our sound to be better so that we can do better taping, because most people are not showing up, they're watching it on YouTube and they're, they're watching it. So we need better
Acoustics and audio visual.
So that we can do that, and we can't do that with a lower ceiling.
And then one thing I also want to reiterate is that all of these impacts were assessed by the planning board as part of our SEACER review process that the zoning board had deferred to them.
But we're just asking so that we know.
Of course. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that that does not pertain to the variances being requested.
How many floors are in this building?
Go ahead, Rich. Rich, go ahead. You have the big one of two weeks, Memorial. Now that you have a beautiful building, how many more will you have during the year?
Well, the way the conference
We actually, sorry to interrupt, we have a table in our large event plan that was submitted to the planning board, estimating the frequency that we could anticipate that we'd see the site increase. This is all outlined, and it goes from small events to large events, it addresses medium to, or small to large events and the frequency that. So to answer your question, it'd be modest, so maybe a large event gets one to two additional events a year.
Right.
So, and then some of these medium events get a little more. Again, it's all outlined in the plan that we addressed with planning board.
And while we're before the ZBA, we understand that here for variances, they know that we're looking at the height variance, but with that, I think does seep into the character of the neighborhood.
Right.
So I think that there is a bit of overlap. They understand the planning board does the full site plan, they've done traffic, there's a 500-page study, it goes month by month, day by day, hour by hour, so all of that information is available. Their secretary is very good, it's all online. So to the extent that there are those questions, you can seek out that information, but let's just ensure that we're staying within the scope of the stream corridor setback and the height. I think the vegetation is relevant, I understand that it'll be a bigger space for people to come to, but it's really the height and the impact of the height on the character of the area, whether that's substantial, so just let's make sure we're within our scope.
What was my question, is how many floors are in the building?
So the way it's structured, there's only actually two floors. There's the first floor, which the entrance, and then it has stadium-style seating around a stage descending to the bottom floor, which is then starting around here.
So you come in the first floor?
So you would come in, this is a higher elevation floor, you come in, and then you would be looking over stadium-style seating descending down to the ground floor.
Okay.
So there's no second floors there, can the height be brought down if there's not usable space up there?
There is a small mezzanine section that we're getting to lift that up so it kind of peaks out over. It was much larger in our original proposal, but we shrunk down the height as best we could to get that down. So it is bare minimum where acoustically it works, we can fit all of our HVAC systems and infrastructure related to building into the ceiling. So again, small mezzanine space, but we've reduced it as much as possible.
Is there more room to reduce it, or not, not really?
I would say not really, we can consult with engineers and our architects to see what we can do, but we, we're working within the margins on this one.
Are there classrooms?
Yes, there's classroom space that's designated inside the structure as well. So again, this is auditorium, it also has some administrative offices and classroom space, rehearsal as well to practice choir and singing. I could use some practice, so maybe I'll book a room.
I think, Peter, just from having reviewed the narrative, where I think it does go into, yes, we could lower, lower the height of the building, I think that was admitted in the document, that that's where the concern lies, is that the ZBA, they're giving you a deviation from the law, as we all know, and they're obligated to give you the minimum variance necessary to accomplish what it is that you're seeking. So if it is empty space and if it is not necessary for acoustics, then we have the zoning laws for a reason, to ensure that there is consistency and that there aren't exceptions to the rule without serious justification. So I just want, I assume that we will be coming back later on, but if it can be lowered, then we need to know why it can't specifically.
Hi, Allison Phillips, I'm the attorney working with the project, and I appreciate you
Welcome.
letting us come here tonight. And Sarah's absolutely right, and, you know, I'm glad that, you know, I want to keep in mind that, you know, we're talking a lot, this has been a project that I think has been before, you know, many boards in the town for quite some time. You know, there's a lot of information that was generated during the SEACER review on this, but for our board, we're looking, you know, for the ZBA, we're looking at the area variances, and, you know, when we're doing that, we're focusing on, you know, this balancing analysis where you're looking at, you know, does the benefit to the applicant outweigh a detriment to the community? So we're focusing on, you know, by looking at these factors and looking at the specific area variances that we're looking at, you know, what is the detriment to the community by allowing a variance of 12 and a half? know, what is the detriment to the community by allowing a variance of 12 and a half feet versus the benefit to the applicant, which I think, you know, they have described well in the project narrative that, you know, the objective they're trying to achieve is this, is this space to facilitate their worship and their camp activities and their educational programs. And the objective is to have a structure that can accommodate the number of people that the congregation expects to attract, but also to be able to perform their services in a way that is more relevant to today's time. And that's making these recordings, having the acoustics in place where they can actually have high-value recordings that they can broadcast to congregants who can't make it to the facility. So all of that, I think, has to be taken into account when we're thinking about, you know, the balancing analysis that we have to do, focusing on the specific variance requests.
Right. That's good. You're really, you're really looking at two detriments, and how they balance out.
Exactly.
And then the last question, which would be on the variance standard test, is, is the alleged difficulty self-created? This is a kind of a product of the time that we're in. So if you take a look at the nursing home, that was constructed well before zoning, having that height. Had we anticipated that the Northeastern Conference facilities would be as popular as they were, that there would be as much interest for this, we could have constructed this before the 2005 and possibly have gotten it without any variances. So things to just consider. And then another thing is the production quality these days is required to be significantly greater than it was in the past. So that's why these audio and visual improvements that could be offered by this height variance are, they're going to help. And they aren't the same as what used to be. So. That's our comment on that. And then, I'm rounding off, so you don't have to listen to me talk anymore. So again, I just wanted to reiterate, thank you again for having this rehearing. We appreciate working with you guys. We've been working with you guys for years. And we want something that both the, the town can be proud of and that the applicant can be proud of. So again-
The benefits. The benefits to be had, it's by the community and our group. So, because the community will be able to use the facility.
Are you going to go back and talk to the engineers, you said, or whoever, to see if the height can be brought down by how much and not substantially affect things? You're going to get back to us?
Again, we can, we can work with them. Again, if you look actually in our, our variance narrative, if you look into section D, we actually per, no, sorry. Sorry, I just want to put the right section. If you look at section B, second paragraph from the last, we actually go into a very detailed analysis of why we can't really reduce the structure height any further. Again, we'll work with our architects, we'll reach out to them to see what we can do. But again, I'm not sure how much, if we can promise anything on that.
Well, I actually spoke to the architect before coming here, and he assured me that unless we're going a whole new design, there's the way the roof is set, after they've taken off the cross and all of that that was on top, there's, because if not, as he said, he would have done it already. Because why would he have done a roof knowing that we have to go for variance? He's well aware of what height measurements are, and when you're seeking a variance, it has to be the least amount that you could possibly need it for. He was here, and he made the presentation about a year and a half ago. I think maybe only one of you were in here when he came. But he talked a lot about the height and why it had to be that height, and why he couldn't possibly reduce it the way it is. So we would be talking about a whole do-over with the planning board, with everybody to go back. But I, I'm the one that communicates with them and tell them, you know, what we're following up, and that's where we were. Sorry.
No, I think it's a good point. And I think, you know, we have to, you know, over this long period of time that, you know, we've been looking at this project, and the town's been looking at this project, and the different boards, I think that, you know, this has been dissected as to, you know, what can we do to make it better, to make it less impactful, to reduce the height. Things like the cross and the cupola, which wouldn't be included within the height restriction under the town's law. It was recognized that that just adds to the visual impact, so it was eliminated. And I think that, you know, the project team has, has really tried to do the best that it can, and to look at this design, and, you know, can we eliminate another foot? Can we eliminate another inch? And when you put everything together, the objectives they're trying to achieve, the need for a certain space with the necessary acoustics, the physical design of the building with the HVAC and the systems that are necessary, this is really the bare minimum of what they were able to do.
I think that's incredibly helpful, all of your statements and that feedback, because that tells the board that this really is it. Like, there would be no other reduction without a complete redesign. So thank you, that's helpful.
As, as, just a perspective here, I'm looking at the view northwest from road intersection here, which you have put together. Roughly from the level of the street, how high above that is the top of the building? A sense of that?
We'll bring in the engineer for this one.
Ah, good.
We expected these questions. I looked at the intersection, the grade in the intersection.
Right. I'm looking at the view northwest from road intersection, yeah.
SKY.
And the top of the building was about 22 feet high.
22 feet, okay. Okay, so this, yeah, so this is about 22 feet, okay.
So we set down, it's not that much as well.
Okay. Other questions?
Can we talk about the stream corridor and where the disturbances are going to be?
Yeah. Well, you want to talk about, we had talked about the stream corridor. We understand the zero variance in terms of crossing the stream. I think another question here is, and you have moved, or are moving, I think you've moved the cabins already, haven't you?
Yes.
And we understand that the building itself is outside the 100-foot. So what we're looking at is, we know some of that property is used for parking, and we know that, that the 100-foot? Okay. So the question, Pete, why don't you phrase your question?
Thanks.
I don't want to.
Rather than give you a zero for the entire stream, could we do 100 feet wherever that, that crosses over there, and where the bridge is, 50 feet? So that he'll-
The bridge has to be zero.
I would feel, yes. But 50 feet wide, zero, but a corridor.
Meaning where the bridge crosses?
Correct.
Express your concerns.
So, so if, if my printer worked, I'd be showing you a picture.
Can you draw it?
Yeah, I got it in my pocket.
Express your, your concern.
I can come up and just show you on the map real quick.
Zero at the crossing.
Cross, right about here.
Yep, this is the place that I want to-
So the zero, does it need to be only 50 feet wide, 75 feet wide, 100 feet wide? It crosses here. What is that? How many feet? You know? So that we can, if we can identify spaces, so that we know you're not going all the way over the whole thing.
We can. We can identify the square footage of disturbance for the grading, if you didn't look up her, and limited to that, if that was something you wanted.
Which I believe we do actually document in our seeker narrative, where we identify very specific areas where we are requesting.
If you give us a copy of that, we'll put it in the variance.
I can read some of it.
We got it.
Is that the seeker narrative or the zoning application?
Zoning, or, sorry, variance narrative, my mistake. It's the variance narrative that we submitted. Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Did I do it right?
Yep.
So, yeah, that was pretty much my spiel on that. So again, leading off where we left last time, I don't think we really heard any concerns from the board as to why the variance was denied. And we'd love to discuss that with you guys tonight.
I think it's clarity in terms of the building height, what you're doing to certainly the foliage around it. I think this has been very helpful, the discussion tonight in terms of, you're really down to the basic building right now, and to vary it, again, to lower the height, will change your footprint substantially. And then that raises all kinds of other issues that we would have to look at, both from an environmental perspective and, well, I don't know about a height perspective. Paul, questions?
Nah, I wish you were this clear the first go-around, because this presentation answered a lot of questions I had, and it was very clear. So I don't have any other questions or, you know, I don't, yeah. Jim?
An answer to why the decision was last time, I think, at least for myself and some others, we didn't have the clarity then, now.
We're, we're sorry it was a shock to you last night. We-
It is what it is.
It is what it is. And we just want to be clear and distinct in terms of what was being offered. And tonight was really very helpful. Thank you.
So what I would propose is that we continue this hearing until February, and we will consider resolutions and probably consider each of the request variances separately, and put those in separate resolutions. And if we have further questions, which we may have, we'd like to be able to come back to you. And I'm assuming, Peter, you would be the-
Peter.
Yeah. Come back and ask for further questions.
Absolutely. If you, again, feel free to reach me at the office at any time, emails, whenever. If you guys have questions, feel free.
Okay. Mr. Perkins, any other questions?
I'm good tonight, thanks.
Counsel?
No other questions. I do appreciate you coming back, providing the clarity. Perhaps our questions weren't as clear throughout the process as well. I mean, it's a big project, and they have a community to keep in mind as well, and the impact on that community and the neighbors. Even something as straightforward as the height of a building, like this really helps and kind of paints the perfect picture. So I think that they're satisfied and have all the information, at least that was told to me, that was outstanding. So they're much better equipped to proceed.
Ms. Moss, any other questions from your perspective?
Just an observation, that the application has been before you for a long time, and that there were long periods where the applicant didn't appear.
Right.
So it's, I think it's good to bring things-
Yes.
-back around and look at them.
That's a good point. And changes, the cabins moved from the north to the south, and so I think it was helpful.
This application has seen many changes over the years. So I would, I'm more than happy to rehash everything with you guys, and again, answer any questions that you guys may have.
Okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second to?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Do you have the date?
It would be, I'm sorry, it would be for February?
22nd.
22nd. Thank you. Again, thank you, and thank you all, all the individuals who are participating in that.
I hear you're wanting to see the impacts within the buffer, and showing that as sort of an illustration and quantifying it. Is there anything else that we should prepare or bring or submit in preparation for the next meeting?
Well, we talked about your 50-foot corridor, which goes down by the, across the bridge, basically.
So we can show a 50-foot line on there, so you can see what's impacted within 50-foot? Because I think that would only be the crossing at that point.
Correct.
I just want to make sure you have enough room to work on it.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It's just these do run with the land. So if they give you a zero-foot variance to the stream corridor, if this property is ever sold, the potential to build in that area would then arise.
Right.
But you would still have to get a permit, right? So there's some protections, but it was just really to ensure the protection of the, the stream corridor. So any, any, what do I want to say?
Like, the north side will be relatively unscathed.
Right.
Yeah, because of the turds.
That would be nice to, like, you know, make sure that that is in there.
I think in fairness to our questions about the zero on the creek, even as we have evolved over the last nine months, 12 months, the impact, the climate impact that we're starting to see, and particularly this is in the Fall Creek watershed, a very important watershed for us, we're, we're much more sensitive to it today than we were even nine months ago, and the impact of it. So protecting that is, is one of our-
And we completely understand that. One of the things that makes this site special is the stream corridor, right? It is Victory Lake. It is what the camp is named after.
Right.
So it is 100% our objective to make sure that that stream corridor is protected.
Great.
Good, good. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And again, thank you so much for allowing us to re-hear this.
Okay.
Thank you.
And isn't the rule, the first out has to shovel the wash?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We are now going to 22-23Z, the Brandl property, finally.
Thanks for being patient.
Thank you for being patient.
That's a hard act to follow.
Yes, yes, it is. I would move to open the public hearing on the Brandl 22-23Z. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Welcome. And tell us who you are. We're guessing, but we know.
I'm Christine Brandl.
And who is the gentleman next to you?
This is my contractor, Bruce.
Bruce Bauer.
Bruce, welcome. Well, welcome. Tell us a little bit about the project.
I'm seeking a side variance to rebuild my garage and the same footprint that it existed.
Okay. Why?
I would like it to be structurally sound. It's kind of falling apart. It has a leaky roof, it has termite damage, there's too many holes to fix it the way it stands.
Don't you want it bigger?
No. It's a two-car garage. I would like the same size. It has ample storage in the back. So I really just want to rebuild it to make sure it doesn't fall on my vehicle and to keep out the critters and, you know, the water.
Do you anticipate the architecture of it being different? The slope of your roof, are you going to peak it more?
It's pretty much the same.
Yes, it will be, it will be a more sloped roof.
Because your house is more peaked to it than the garage does.
It'll add an architectural element that'll be much more peaked than what's existed.
Will there be overhang on the property line side?
There will be an overhang.
How are you going to handle the water off-run?
Gutter to the back.
Gutter. And once it comes out of the gutters, how are you going to handle it? Because you're right on the property line.
Well, there's no gutter on the existing structure right now, I believe.
Well, as, as we know, climate is changing.
Right.
So you're going to put gutters on, and then water will go. How will you handle the water coming out of the gutters?
Well, that's a, that's a good question. We're going to lead her to the backyard. I don't know how far we need to do that to-
Or put some type of stone or dry well?
We could put a dry well.
That would be helpful, because you're right on the property line there.
Yeah, we could do that on the, on the property line side, sure.
And the construction of it in terms of the foundation? You're going to have a foundation for this?
Correct. The existing foundation is probably questionable-
Yeah.
-at best. So we would like to put a new foundation.
Okay. Disruption during that construction, how are you going to handle that?
We won't encroach on the neighboring property. It'll be able to excavate in the area that we have to, to put in.
Okay, so you've got, you've got this much space.
It's three feet, but it's a, it's a two-foot wide push, so it's going to be really tight and challenging on that side. But obviously, we won't approach the fence, the existing fence there. So we will have to-
Is there, is there room to move the garage toward the house, or not?
There's really not room to move the garage towards the house.
Okay.
We, we looked at that option. It's, it's really tight. And I think the way the existing sewer comes out of the back of the property, the side of the property, it's, it's going to be right in the-
Well, your septic isn't back, and, and the field comes out. How close does the field come now to the, to the garage? It shouldn't come close to the garage, does it?
Yeah, they're pretty, they're pretty close. So, you know, we really can't encroach on that.
You, I know you have, you submitted a picture, and I'm not sure I understood that.
Yeah, the picture, there's a dry well here, and the garage is on this side. So if we were going to move it over, we'd have to move over-
What are you using the dry well for? My ignorance more than anything.
Um, I don't really know. I don't really know.
Well, is it to capture-
Probably, it looks like the-
Is it to capture water? Is it to capture water?
The sink, it looks like the sink.
Oh, there it is.
Possibly the laundry.
I'm not sure what that is for.
It's probably old. The house was built in the 50s?
Yes.
How many of you were alive in the 50s?
That's, that's not irrelevant.
I just thought I'd ask. Okay. Okay, so what I'm looking at is the septic tank coming out. You've got the back porch. The garage is to the right of that as I'm looking at this?
Correct.
Okay. So you really can't move the garage back into your property? Into the back of the property?
No, because it would have to sit in the same location. If we moved it over to the left to have the right variance-
Then you've got to redo the-
It would move into the septic area and the leach fields.
Okay. Questions? Come on, guys.
Do we have to hold them? Very well.
It's pretty straightforward. There's a lot of those garage, there weren't a lot of those garages around when I was a kid. You know what? There were a lot of those garages around when I was a kid, but most of them got bigger.
Oh, really?
Is this a two-car corridor?
It is.
Okay.
Public hearing?
I'm sorry?
No. I'll address it at the public hearing.
All right, I would, I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Oh, wait, did you open it? Did I miss it?
Yes, yes, we did.
Oh, did we ask for public comment?
We have not asked for public comment. Is there anybody from the public to make a comment?
I'm her neighbor. Is she building on the same thing? I have no objections.
Are you, are you next to the house, sir?
Yes, I am at Acre Bowl.
As I look at the house, are you to the left or-
I'm to the left.
So you're right on that fence?
I'm off the fence line.
What's, tell me, what is on your side of that property, right there? Anything?
Nothing.
House.
Yeah, you, my house is there, there's no structures there.
Okay. Any concern?
No, certainly not.
Nice to hear, come, thank you.
Yes, we appreciate it. How wide is, how wide is your lot?
I don't have some information.
Oh, sir, your lot is probably the same width.
Yeah, I think it's something five foot wide.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
How big is the lot?
I think that's where it is.
Third of an acre.
Third of an acre?
Yeah, point 330.
Okay, so you've got about 13,000 square feet, okay. Okay.
I do just have one question. With the top of the garage, is there an overhang?
There isn't.
There wasn't overhang, but that's nothing, and she actually tore it down because it was close to my property.
So nothing would be overhanging the property? I just know we wanted to make sure.
So, so you're, you're going to have an overhang off of the, off of the property line side?
No.
So how, and that has to be the three-foot? Is that what you're measuring? Okay, all right. So I think also if we're looking at the proper handling of the water, you're going to put a gutter on there?
If you want a drywell, we can put a drywell, for sure.
Yeah, I would say two, simply, you're going to put a steeper roof in. I would not put the standard gutter in, I would put a wider gutter. Just a six-inch maybe, just to move it. Okay. All right. Other, okay, we have, we have a motion to close.
No, sir.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have a resolution here, which I'd like to read. This is a resolution to grant an area variance, Christine Brandl. I'm sorry, I'm not pronouncing your last-
Brandl.
Brandl. There's no E in there?
No.
Okay, I would have snuck it in. Tim Crumwall Place, Hyde Park, New York, 12538. Dated January 25, 2023, resolution 22-23Z. Whereas the applicant, Christine Brandl, has submitted an application for an area variance related to the demolition and reconstruction of an existing 21-foot by 33-foot garage of the project at property located at Tim Crumwall Place, Hyde Park, identified as tax parcel 606408876974 in the neighborhood zoning district of the historic overlay district. And whereas the project is depicted in a survey entitled Map of Property, Christine Brandl, prepared by Carney Rainfall, dated May 5, 2021, and on sketches entitled Site Plan, submitted to the town by Bruce Bauer, you, Bruce Bauer, of CLD Enterprises LLC on December 5, 2025. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with Section 267B of the town law in Hyde Park, zoning law Section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variance. Requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to a nearby property, properties. The current garage is in a state of disrepair. The new structure will enhance the consistency of the architectural style in the neighborhood. The current garage is and the proposed replacement garage will be outside the required side yard setback of 10 feet. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. The current septic system and drywell will not permit locating the garage in any other location. The width of the lot further restricts any other location for the garage. The requested variance is numerically substantial. The side yard setback variance request represents a 70% reduction from 10 feet to 3 feet. At the time of construction, all garages in the neighborhood were similarly constructed 3 feet from the side lot line. The requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. Plans for managing the discharged roof water need to be included in the construction. However, the roof must be designed to ensure that the structure does not result in an overhang onto the neighboring property. The difficulties are not self-created. The garage was built in 1950s using the side yard in existing, in existence at that time. Be it further resolved that the zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants requested variance subject to the following conditions pursuant to Section 108-335F1. The authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of insurance, otherwise it will, is revoked. And two, payment of all fees and escrow. I have moved this. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you pull the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Agrewal?
Yes.
Mr. Donley?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes. Congratulations. Good luck on your garage. Thank you for, for coming.
Thanks for waiting.
Thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
Do we have?
You'll be co-
I'll take him out to dinner.
Keep the folder.
All right. Thank you. Do we have, let's see.
Where's the word?
Time to adjourn.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking, okay.
I can make a-
Are you going to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Moss, you're not opposed?
Uh.
I declare this meeting closed. Thank you, sir.